Would anyone like to say anything about our budget?
Mr. Taylor is correct, you usually give an overview, but it's been on the board docs for since July. If anybody has any questions, I haven't been approached with any. I'd be glad to go through this again because it's exciting material, but it hasn't changed. It's the exact same thing that you approved at the last meeting to go to public hearing. I can go over it if you want.
Is there interest in going over it again? And at what point can we add anything? Or we're going to discuss it?
Well, this is the dollar, we know now the dollar that we have. So after a public hearing, we come back at the next meeting and that's when you'll either decide to go with what we have presented or proposed, or you can take away something. It's the dollar number that's the vital sign there. So you can add or subtract it at that point.
Everyone good on that?
So this isn't finished.
Perfect, thank you. If there's no comments, I'm going to go ahead and close the public meeting now. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve tonight's agenda for August the 6th, 2024. As presented.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is the minutes from our last two meetings, July 16th and July 29th. Are there any questions or comments or corrections? Is there a motion on the minutes?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the minutes.
Sir.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I see. There's no one signed up for staff or student comment?
No members.
I'm not going to take that personally.
This one's blank as well.
Okay, thank you. Moving right along. We have our second reading for our disciplining consequences for alcohol, tobacco, and vaping. Is there any questions? Ms. Jordan is here, if anybody wants to ask her a question. Is there a motion?
Like they asked her just to make sure we have some clarification. Thank you, Ms. Jordan.
You're welcome.
So for instance, for some of these with counseling, if they don't do the counseling, then they will get the full amount of days off. If they do counseling, then they will not be taking, or doing the whole 10 days, it'll be like five days. Is that the way I understand this?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the policies 5.01 and 5.02 as presented.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both motions passed. Next up is our mental health and vision insurance.
Good evening. Is it on? Can you hear me?
I can hear you, but nothing's working.
Is this better?
Yes.
Okay. So we're all happy. So we have a presentation tonight just to do a slight recap. We went out for an RFP for an insurance consultant. Back in the spring of the year, we received five proposals, narrowed it down, interviewed three, and selected Mark III, which we told the board about. They did a very comprehensive process and I would like to introduce Mr. Heath Thomas as the consultant. He's worked us through this and has been amazing.
Amazing.
Yes.
Amazing.
Her words, not mine. Good evening, board. Thank you for having me this evening. My name is Heath Thomas with Mark III. We are very fortunate to have begun starting the process of being your consultant in the past few weeks. We immediately after becoming, being awarded that contract, put the plan, the health plan out to bid. We'll go through that this evening and hopefully answer any questions that you have in that regard. She got my clicker wrong. So I wanted to give just a quick background about Mark III. So we do, our specialty is the public sector. We manage 300,000 public sector employees across the southeast. We have offices located across the states you see here. I'm personally out of Chesterfield and manage the eastern side of Virginia for our team. A little bit of snapshot of some current clients that you may recognize. Obviously, we have various product lines in these groups. Some groups we do health insurance consulting for, some we do just voluntary benefits. But these are a number of clients we represent across the state. And again, all of our business is public sector business. So besides the consulting, some of the things that your employees are going to receive moving forward because of the partnership with Mark III, they're going to have a dedicated account person that they can reach regarding claims. And that's going to be on the voluntary benefits that they may participate in or the health insurance. We'll help facilitate those. We're going to have an enrollment manager who will come out and assist with getting the employee seen, answering any questions. We're going to have a non-commissioned enrollment team to come out and facilitate that. So your employees will be able to meet one-on-one with someone who's not incentivized to sell them anything. They're just there to educate them on the opportunities that are there and help answer their questions. We are working on putting together a full voluntary benefits portfolio. In certain circumstances, you have some individual Aflac policies where we were able to come in and save 20 or 30% of what your employees are currently paying, which I think is a great benefit, especially in today's economy. We'll talk about some additional savings in just a few minutes. We also are going to be implementing flexible spending accounts. And I think this is a huge leap forward for the county. There are two buckets of money that your employees will be able to pre-tax moving forward. One of which is going to be for medical expenses and the other is dependent daycare. And as someone who used to have a child in daycare, thankfully she's moving into fifth grade now, but it was an apartment that I paid for that I never got to live in. And it is outstanding to see the tax benefit if you're able to move up to $5,000 a year for those individuals pre-tax and be able to pay for their daycare expenses. So I'm excited about that. We also are going to be building a benefits website. We have a benefits book that you may have seen during the actual consulting visit we put together for our groups. And all of these things are going to be customized for Akimak. So it's all going to be branded, co-branded with your logo and everything will be approved by your teams. So just a little bit things about what we're going to do to communicate to employees coming up on open enrollment, which is right around the corner. Again, the website, we're going to have the guide and posters and videos. Direct communications are an option as well. We've seen a tremendous boost in text message communication and social media communication in the past few years, especially post-COVID, and trying to meet people where they are. So not everybody wants to have that thing mailed to them directly or have, you know, a poster out there they want to see, an ad on social media. So we can do all of those things and help your employees to come into open enrollment and understand their benefits. This is just a screenshot of our enrollment technology. So this is a new platform that we're going to be rolling out for the school system. This platform will allow the staff and the employees not only to manage new hires, qualified life events, so if someone has a change throughout the year, we can manage it with this system as well. And in addition to that, obviously, open enrollment. So we're going to be able to put all the benefits on one platform. It's not dependent on a specific carrier. And so that allows a lot of flexibility moving forward. Right now, your employers are rolling directly with the carrier and so we're able to move them out if that's necessary. So as we move into the meat of the proposal, there, we're going to talk about a couple different funding options and I'll try to explain it. And if anyone has any questions, please don't hesitate to stop me. So what this is, is a 24-month rolling time period of your claims and your member and subscriber count. So a couple of things to note, over the past 24 months, your average subscribers have dropped from the low 500s to the high 470s, okay? We've had a slight change in that. I think in talking with staff, a lot of that is due to premium increases and just affordability. And so we're going to address some of that today as well. To the right, you can see medical payments, capitation payments, those are payments to doctors for the network fees, and then pharmacy. I want to touch on pharmacy just quickly because it's a, it is certainly a part of your spend, but in comparison to the medical is a much smaller part. And we'll talk about how that is. The 12-month subtotals there on the right, it's just a rolling 12 months to show you that in the last two years, even though you've had a slight drop in enrollment, your spend has been pretty normalized. And in fact, United Healthcare over the years has been a good partner for Akimak based on our analysis. They have given you low single-digit increases, especially in the last five years. And I think that they have provided good service to the employees. And based on the spend, I think they have provided you good rates. This next slide is high-cost claims. So these are claimants above $50,000 in claims. These are de-identified, there's no health conditions up here. But I do want to mention that you have 16 people. Just think about that for a second. We have 472 people on the plan and 16 of them spend almost $2 million. So we have the top claimant there, over half a million dollars. These are serious conditions that your employees have. We want to make sure that we're handling those in a way that is respectful and a way that we can make them get the best treatment that they can get. But just to show you how few people can impact your plan, a very, very small segment of your plan is spending out of that $5 million or spending 40% of it. So you have 16 people spending 40% of your plans. So when we put the plan out to bid with all of our municipal groups in Virginia, one of the companies that everyone wants to look at is Local Choice. Local Choice is a partnership between DHRM and Anthem. They administer plans for the state as well as a huge number of other providers across the state. They do their rate structures a little bit differently. So some points of note there on the right, these rates. And the percentages at the bottom are in reference to your current premiums, okay? So scroll down to the bottom, we're at 3% under current with Local Choice, which is a good deal. But there are some things that we need to note. It does include dental and vision. It would require an increase in the deductible. And the deductible is a nasty insurance term that means the employees pay, okay? They pay before the health plan kicks in. And in this case, it would go from $750 to $1,000. And you have 43 people, about 10% of your population currently hanging out on what we would call a high deductible health plan. It's a health plan that currently has a deductible of $2,500 as compared to the $750. If we were to look at moving to Local Choice, their high deductible health plan is paired with an HSA. And so your employees would lose copays on the front end. They would then be paying the negotiated rate for services that they would be receiving. And so it would be a significant change for them in how they perceive their benefits. They also, under Local Choice, would lose pharmacy transparency. They do a capitation amount for pharmacy. And so we would lose the ability to track that if we ever decided to go self-funded. And that would be a very important part. As I mentioned a couple of slides ago, you are spending a good chunk of money on pharmacy and we would like to be able to see that as transparent as possible. You also have limited flexibility in plan designs with Local Choice. They have five plan designs that you can pick from. The $1,000 benefit that you see the pricing on here for the top two plans is their highest copay deductible plan. And then their next option up would be the high deductible plan. So they really don't have many options that fit into your current structure. If you were to go to the Local Choice down the road, there are run-out claims that could be incurred. And so you could be paying premium for a new policy while also paying run-out claims under TLC, which would not be a good scenario. Questions about this particular one? The next type of funding that we looked at was self-funding. And so for self-funding, the way that that concept works is you choose a provider network. You also choose someone to pay your claims. In this case, we have Anthem on the left and United Healthcare on the right. And you also have what they call stop-loss insurance. So when we get to a certain level of claims, the county would stop paying those claims and the carrier that you have selected would begin to take over those benefits. So in this scenario, for your employees, they both quoted $150,000 stop-loss. So the school system would be on the hook for the first $150,000 per employee. And then over that, the stop-loss would kick in and cover the excess claims over the $150. And as you see, you have a few people that are getting close to that one that's well over that right now. So with this scenario, what they do is they charge you stop-loss. There's also an aggregate stop-loss in case the group runs poorly as a whole. We'll talk about that in a second. And you also have an administration fee there at the top, $25.68 on the Anthem scenario. And then they're giving you pharmacy rebates. So that's a big thing if you go self-funded is how you're going to balance that funding mechanism. With Anthem, they were able to guarantee the $46.92 in pharmacy rebates. Their estimated rebates are actually north of $100 a month, but that's not guaranteed. So United Healthcare would not commit to an estimation on that front. And that's why that is blank on their side of the screen. The red letters in the middle are lasers. And what a laser is, is this is not a specific procedure. This is an individual that the carriers have identified as a likely high-risk, likely a perpetual high-risk. And so instead of having $150,000 stop for that individual, you have a separate stop-loss for that person at $500,000. So the school system would be on the hook for that individual for the first $500,000 in claims. And then everything beyond that would be covered. Okay? So the major difference between this funding scenario and what you're doing right now is right now you're paying an insurance carrier premium. They're covering everything thereafter. They're taking care of all of the backend. If you were to move to a scenario like this, you would be paying all of those claims. You would see those claims come in weekly. You would pay those out weekly, likely through ACH, which I understand is slightly difficult at this current moment. And then you would monitor those, we'd get reports from Anthem, we'd track those claims. But you would be much more involved in the actual claims handling, okay? Because you're going to be sending checks out for those. So a very different concept. The, we'll focus on Anthem for a second because they have the lower carrier estimation. They estimated your claims per employee per month, is that PPM term, per employee per month, at $718.40, which comes up to a total of just north of $4 million. If we add that to the fixed annual cost of 808, then we get to $4.8 million roughly. And then with the projections on the aggregate, so if the group runs poorly as a whole, and I'll talk about that in just a second, that would get us up to 5.9. That does not include the $500,000 laser. That would be on top of that. And I just want to reference that even though Anthem is estimating your monthly claims total at 339, you can see there at the bottom, in your last 12 months, you have averaged well above 339 in claim spend. Okay? So in our perspective, there is not a significant amount of reward for going this path currently based on your current situation. And there is substantial amount of risk potentially because of assuming all of those claims. Okay? So questions about this particular page? Because I know this is a different concept. So you're paying administrative fees, stop-loss fees, and then you're monitoring those claims on a weekly or monthly basis. So if we were not to look at self-funding, then the next step would be to look at fully insured. And this is the current setup that you have right now. So we're, in this scenario, we're paying an insurance carrier premium. They're taking care of all of the legwork on the claims processing. It includes all of your pharmacy and medical all-in-one. At the initial bid response, so we had responses, as you saw, from United Healthcare and Anthem on the self-funded scenario. We also had responses from Anthem and United Healthcare on the fully insured scenario. And we also got a third response from Centerra Health. So at the initial bid response, this was the initial quotes that they sent back to us, you can see there in the middle that United Healthcare would be what I would call non-aggressive in their quote. They came back with a 17% increase, which would have taken your total expenditure to almost $6.8 million on a fully insured basis. Anthem and Centerra came back much more aggressive than that. You can see there, they were 5% under current with Anthem. And Centerra started at 2% under current. So those were competitive quotes to begin with. All of these numbers based on the current headcount of 472 employees. After we went back and forth and did some negotiations with the carriers, tried to get them to sharpen their pencil, we were able to get Anthem to come back at 9% under current. United Healthcare got to 8% over current. And that included a premium holiday and a reduction in rates. And Centerra was able to sharpen their pencil some and got to 6% under current. It was at this point that Anthem also offered to give an 11.8% rate cap guarantee in year two, which provides some significant stability for your employees, which we'll talk about in just a second. As of yesterday, we got new information. That's how sometimes these processes can go. We got a new quote from United Healthcare yesterday, not prompted by anything. They just wanted to sharpen their pencil again. I think they were under the assumption they were at risk of losing the group. And they came back with an increase from the $100,000 premium holiday credit initially to $150,000 premium holiday credit. They also reduced the rate slightly, which got them to 4% over current. And they included a 12.9% rate cap guarantee in year two. So not quite as good as some of the other providers, but they did get much closer to where we thought they would be originally. And so with this, the Anthem premiums are a significant value to your employees based on where they currently are standing. That 9% reduction currently does not include, we'll talk about this in a second, an additional 2% opportunity to bundle dental and vision. And with that in combination, that would get us to 11% under. And then with an 11.8% maximum increase in year two, we're able to maintain current funding for 24 months basically, which I think for both the school board and the employees is a great thing. The benefits are very, very similar across the board. There are a couple of things that I highlighted. And you'll see the United Healthcare benefit. They do have a flat copay of $250 in the emergency room, which is an excellent benefit. We don't see flat copays very frequently in the ER anymore. And obviously, there's going to be some employees that use that. But I think that with Anthem, they're giving in and out of network benefits there at the top. You can see the other two plans have in-network only. And I think the pharmacy is the greatest impact to your employees. So removing the deductible that currently exists for your employees on the pharmacy. Right now, a single person has a $100 deductible, family have up to three. And Centerra proposed the same, Anthem proposed no deductible. So from the front end, your employees are able to get some savings, which I think is important. They're able to have those copays immediately in the plan year as opposed to satisfying that deductible. On the second plan that you have, you essentially have two plans with United Healthcare that are nearly identical. The difference is one is an in-and-out-of-network benefit. It's under the Choice Plus category is what they call it. And the other is in-network only, as we just saw. So on this particular plan, your employees are paying a buy-up to get that out-of-network benefit, but they're still having the same costs when they're going to see those providers. So nothing changes in the deductibles, nothing changes in the out-of-pocket maximums. The pharmacy is still the same. So these people are paying, and I believe there are about 25 people on this plan that are paying extra premium just to get additional network. And we'll talk about how we're going to solve that with Anthem. And on the high deductible health plan, the story is the same. So similar benefits across all three plans. The emergency room still stands out with United Healthcare as a flat fee. And the no deductible with Anthem stands out as a benefit as well. In regards to our recommendations, Mark III is recommended moving to Anthem fully insured for the 2024-2025 contract year. We feel that this transition allows employees and the school board to budget for 24 months with the reduction this year and the rate cap in year two and keep you about where you are currently at a worst-case scenario. I, we believe that your group is of a size that you should continue to explore self-funding. It is a situation that right now that your claims are indicative that it may not be the right timing to do that, but you are at a size that self-funding should be something we should constantly look at. So whether that's after the second-year rate guarantee goes up or even next year, whenever you all would want us to look at rebidding the plan, we'd be happy to do that and give you the same analysis and figure out when that timing is right. The other piece that we can look at doing is self-funding the dental by itself. That would basically allow us to tip a, put a toe in the sand essentially and fund the dental claims on a self-funded basis, but not change the medical. The reason for that is Anthem will give a 2% discount on that dental and vision in year one, but after that, it goes away. So we can look at certainly solving that problem next year with a self-funded situation or perhaps a fully insured, if that makes sense. Either, we'll look at both and then bring the analysis back to you all. Yeah. In regards to the proposal that came back yesterday from United Healthcare, they did include an additional plan option that's called Surest. And I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about it. It is a plan that essentially removes the deductibles for your employees, but it puts them with a range of copayments. And it puts them with a lot of unknown because you can look on their app and it will tell you what it's going to be, but there's a significant range. It could be $20 or $100 for a primary care visit, okay? So there's a lot of determining what doctor. They base it on the results that that doctor has. They get better rates at those particular providers. And so it would change how your system works. The other downside to that benefit is that it only brought the premiums down another couple of percentage points from the four points that they got down to. It got down to about a 1% over current. But it also put in an increase out of pocket for your employees from $4,000 to $6,000. So on the back end, that additional $2,000, we didn't feel was worth the minor savings to change to that particular plan. It would also require a lot of education for your employees under that plan because it is a very different concept. There are other carriers that are exploring concepts like this where they are essentially grading doctors and facilities and then rewarding the doctors and facilities for good care, which we think is a great concept. But the variance of the copays tends to be a hurdle for some people because they, a lot of people want to go to the doctor they want to go see. And if their copay goes from $20 to $70 because that doctor's not graded right, it's not a good experience for them. So I'm happy to answer any questions about anything that I talked about today. And again, thank you for your time and the opportunity to work with Beth and Carlton and the team at the schools have been great. We have been in, I will say, constant contact over the last six or eight weeks with the process of looking at carriers, doing interviews with carriers, doing the spreadsheet analysis and talking about where we could end up. Yes, ma'am.
First of all, thank you. And then two requests. If we can go back to the very first slide, I think that was the one that showed all of your customers. In light of the, oh, it wasn't the first one, sorry. Yeah, that one. How would you describe the experience with us as a customer? I mean, anything surprising or alarming or pretty average experience?
I would say that the group has been very, very responsive. They were very willing to participate in any way that I needed them to in regards to reviewing the RFP, helping put things out. It was a, it was a great experience.
And then secondly, finally, if we can go, the recommendation here is Anthem fully insured. Can we see a slide? Could we maybe leave it up where that's, okay.
So this particular scenario, the reduction of the 9%, if the employees, if we pass the 9% to each employee tier, so employee-only, spouse, family, everybody saves 9%, it would put about $126,000 back in the pockets of the employees and it would allow about a $315,000 savings to the school system to prevent the increase in year two. And that's what I was meaning by flattening the curve. So there is an option and I won't step on, as only still is on what she's going to talk about in a moment, but there are, there are some significant savings on the table for the school system and the employees with the additional 2% reduction of the dental. It's approximately $615,000 under where you're currently paying. And so depending on how you split that up, will depend on the employees' reaction over the next 24 months. If we were to give them all of the savings now, it's likely we're going to have to take that savings back in 12 months. So they're going to be really happy with us for a very short period of time. And in my opinion, we're better off to levelize that if we can and just keep it consistent, not only for any of the other workers as well. Yes, ma'am.
Great presentation. Appreciate all the time you've been to this.
Yes, sir.
The thing I really hate is just the premiums are so, you know, high, you know, for all the teachers, for all the staff, you know, looking at the founding plan is just, you know, you're almost, maybe someone half their salary for that year. Is there anything that you can say maybe in the year two or whatever that we want to self-fund it to help get those premiums down for our employees?
The premiums are really based on the claims. So... So, if we can find a way to curb the claims, then we certainly could get those premiums down. In regards to the split between employees and spouses and families, that's all a matter of budgetary purposes. It's how much money you can throw at each tier based on how many people you have that are going to enroll in that tier. So, yes, is the opportunity. If you're able to get more money, we can put that wherever you like and adjust. You know, we have some groups that have a $0 employee only in certain circumstances. They may have a really high deductible plan at $0. And then we have others that are very similar to your numbers. It's all over the place. And as you can see by the results of the bid process that we've got back, many of the numbers are at these amounts or significantly higher than that.
So, if, well, as far as, like, if, say we have partial claiming, we don't have 100%, we have maybe 70% claims and 30%, does that stay with you guys? Or would that come back to the, to us? Or is that more of against a self-funded type?
So, if you were self-funded, you absolutely have the ability to benefit from a good year. It's, in my opinion, the only way long-term you can benefit from a good year, which is why I think you should continue to look at it. The problem is that right now, the claim spend, based on the fact that in the last 24 months, you've averaged north of what they're anticipating you're going to spend, is the timing probably doesn't make a ton of sense. And I will say in my conversations, and we do have an Anthem representative here if you have any questions for her, but in my conversations both with Anthem and United Healthcare, they both agreed that Fully Insured at this point was probably the way to go.
And do you think that, if this is for a two-year, if we go ahead with this, if we will look at maybe just doing it for a year, would that be benefit, then we can look at getting another year?
Yeah, we can look at it whenever you like. The rate guarantee obviously gets you into that second year, but if the school were asked to look at it next year, we certainly can look at it again.
Is there, would it be any benefit if we looked at the year's time versus going with the two-year time?
If there's change in the claims, there could be benefit. But ultimately, it comes down, your claims are dictating the numbers. So, I don't want to provide a false expectation that you're going to continue to have $5 or $6 million of claims and suddenly the premium's going to come down by another 20%. It's just unlikely that that's going to happen.
Mr. Taylor, if I could add that part of Mark III's contract is this continuing analysis of our claims. So, it's not a one-and-done with this contract. They are going to continually analyze our claims, see what our 24-month average is going, see what they're doing. They are continuing to do that. That was what their contract was, they're doing that for at least one year, and then we can renew the contract next year. But they will be doing this as a part of the service that we contracted with them.
Yes, and just to add on to that, we'll be having quarterly or semi-annual meetings at least with the staff to discuss how the plan is running and what it's going to be looking like. So, the 11.8% is a maximum, it could be less than that. So, if the plan is running good, it's a chance that Anthem may come in and say, "We're going to keep it at 5% or 6% or flat." And it just depends on how the claims are running.
And we're having a professional analyze this. We're not going to have the surprises that we had before. You know, they come back with a 17% increase and we're like, "Oh, my goodness." And then, you know, we find out that we have high claims. We have somebody constantly looking at what our plan's data is. So, we will know, and we'll be the surprises like it was before.
Well, and not to toot my own horn, but if there were a circumstance where y'all had not gone to bid for the health insurance, it's likely that United Healthcare would have come in with their 17%, and you wouldn't have had time to make a change. So, just footnote for that.
Think it was benefits, thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Can you introduce Tracy, please, before I go?
Tracy McGowan?
Tracy, I'm sorry.
You want to say hi?
I said sorry.
And do you have any questions for Tracy? So, Tracy is our, is the Anthem rep that came in and led the presentation for the Anthem team. They did an amazing job talking about the services they can provide to Akimak County employees. And, but if you have any questions for her, I know that she'd be happy to answer them.
Or if anybody has a question that they want to ask me sort of privately afterwards, I'm happy to say and talk about it as well.
You're done?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
So, what I also want to point out is one of the things about Anthem this time is that we looked at them four years ago, and everybody that wanted to use a Maryland facility or doctor would have been forced out of the Choice or HMO plan to the Choice Plus or POS plan. And Anthem came back this year and said that in just the one plan, they can go to Health Keepers or Gatekeepers, which is in-network or out-network. So, everybody will be in the same plan except for the high deductible. And then if you go to Maryland, and I might get this backwards, it's like I did your name, but if you go to Maryland, you switch from...
Health Keepers to Key Care.
Key Care, okay. Health, so what they did is they came and they gave us both networks in the one plan, so that our employees will be allowed to go to Maryland and still stay in the one plan and not have to quote buy up. So, that was a big advantage this year as to, I mean, one of the reasons they're so competitive. How can you not go to basically a POS plan at that, at the rates?
Just a little feedback.
Sounds like a whole other house.
So, I think the question was going to be, do the employees choose which network? So, the way that the plan works is if you live in Virginia, you will be on the Health Keepers network as long as you're seeking service in Virginia. And in analysis of the top 25 providers you're currently using, all of them are going to be in network. So, the network is not going to be an issue. If you live outside of Virginia, you are on the Key Care network automatically. What we've done with this new, I believe they call it POS Advantage, did I get that right? Is we're able to price it so that the employees don't see any difference. And also, the payroll, people don't see any difference. So, it's the same price of regardless of what network you're in. If you're in Virginia and you're going out of Virginia, then you get access to the Key Care network outside of Virginia. So, you have the full PPO of Anthem behind you.
And it's seamless, you don't pay.
Correct.
It's, you go there and that's how it's processed.
Yeah. So, the employees won't see any difference in premiums if they live across the line. They won't really see any difference in how the plan works. So, I think it's the most seamless opportunity for them.
So, we've had a discussion about, about two years, right, potentially one or two years. Am I right in thinking that this may be, this may be for, at the end of the two years, we go back out?
So, you wouldn't necessarily have to go back out to bid. You could. The two years is just what Anthem has guaranteed for the rate. So, after the two years, they could open up based on what the claims are spending, and they could give you whatever rate increase is justified in that. But we could, we can look anytime. I mean, so, Mark III works for you all. If you want us to go to bid, we'll go to bid at any time.
Before I go any further, this time I'll get the name rate, because I work with them every day. I'd like to introduce Carlton West, or Stan Carlton. He has been through this process daily. We wouldn't have made it without him. He's just done a lot of work on this to enable to move this project forward. And I wanted to introduce him to everybody up the board.
Thank you, Carlton.
So, I try to give you every year like a breakdown of where our employees are. And you'll see that approximately, you know, just over 85% are with the Choice plan, 5.5% with the Choice Plus, and 9.1% with the high deductible. That's kind of changed over the time. The high deductible's kind of gone up a little bit, the Choice Plus has kind of gone down a little bit. It's not surprising that the single tier is over 75%, and that's based on premiums and employer contributions. With this new plan, if Anthem is adopted tonight, there will be no Choice Plus. It's going to be a POS and a high deductible. So, the Choice Plus will be grouped, we're assuming for pricing purposes, with the Choice, because as we just explained, they get the best of both. Okay, so, looking at contribution structure, the first alternative we're providing to here is to look at a traditional employer contribution. And that would be to distribute every bit of the 11% savings and to distribute every bit of the $150,000 extra that we print in here directly to the employee's pocket. So, we were striving towards an 85% employer coverage for single employee and then 50% of the difference show up between the tiers. The reason we chose this is that's because that's what Akimak County does. And oftentimes, we try to keep our benefits similar to Akimak County. So, if we did that and we put it in everything back to the employee in this first year, those would be the employee paycheck deduction. Once again, there's just two plans under this Anthem, the POS and the high deductible health plan. So, that would be the actual deduction per paycheck twice a month, 24 times a year. So, the decrease that would be over where we are now, the reason there is the slash in the first column is because the Choice people, or the Choice Plus people, obviously see a bigger decrease in the Choice. So, you can see that really the big winners in this are the 26 or so people who are on the Choice Plus, because they're getting to go at the Choice rates basically, or the POS. So, that is the decrease per paycheck in the medical insurance deduction that each employee would realize by going with this proposal that's been recommended. There's an alternate employer contribution structure that we wanted to look at, and Heath referred to this. We could pass on only the 11% savings and premiums in the first year, anticipating a possible 11.8% increase in the second year. So, the purpose is to try to level the curve. So, employees won't get that big increase that you see in the first year, but they would get part of that decrease, excuse me, and then so next year, the increase wouldn't be so much. So, it would be more level. So, we would save the $150,000 that we have budgeted in the current year to include the, to the employer's share of health insurance, and we'd use that as carryforward to 26. So, then, because we have it in the current year, it's always already in the base budget for next year. So, that's another 150. We traditionally put in 150 a year. So, between that, we have this strategy, we give us $450,000 to offset the increase that we're anticipating in the second year. And that's up to the 11.8% rate cap. So, if it were to go up the 11.8, and Heath, correct me if I'm wrong, 612,000.
612,000.
So, we would already have 450 of that to offset that. The advantage is, is it flattens the curve. So, the employee, and you know, we are allowed to carry over. So, the employees would not see the big decrease the first year and then right back up to where they were, or possibly in a little over the next year. They'd see kind of a leveling, which consistency is good for employees, because when employees see more money in the paycheck, we adjust our costs, we adjust our lifestyle or whatever to what we bring home. So, they wouldn't see a great benefit and then we're right back up again. It would be a level, and it would be a consistent deduction. So, those would be the total employee per paycheck deductions. With that, only putting the 11, that's 11% saving. Across the board, it's 11% saving, whatever tier you're on. That would provide this much decrease per paycheck. And you see the Choice, what, who were the actual Choice Plus in the past are the ones receiving the biggest decrease. So, those are the two proposals that we're looking at. One is the traditional, to pass everything on to the employee, but knowing that very likely the next year, you're going to have to take that back. So, we're trying to level it out. So, that's all that I have. And of course, if you ask for a recommendation, I would recommend the alternative to keep things more consistent. But I wanted to present two scenarios to this board to give everything to them in the first year or to hold some back so that they're kind of level for two years.
And you need to vote?
Yes, please. Okay, the plan, if we get a vote tonight...
And the structure of them.
Is to, if we accept the recommendation of Mark III and the plan, whichever's in the motion, the plan is that this will be released in August 16th paychecks. One of the big advantages I think that Mark III is going to give to our employees this year is we've never really had anybody, okay, we're going to start an HSA this year. As a parent of three kids who did not, no, not HSA, FSA, sorry. Who had no idea what HSA, FSA does, and of course, mom does it for all of them. This is going to be a huge advantage. I've sat down and talked to new employees, new teachers before, and you're just giving them so much information. And to think that this concept, which is kind of complicated, they are going to have 10 enrollment counselors over here, one-on-one meeting. They're going to be at our new teacher academy, they're going to be at our back-to-school leadership meeting, and they're going to be at convocation. And they have a schedule for going to every school. And they've got like 10 of them who are going to attempt to meet with everybody individually and explain benefits to them. That's going to be a huge increase in service to our employees. So, that, we want to start rolling this out, because open enrollment is the end of August.
I guess to make this a little easier, so can we say like option one and option two?
That's fine. You're talking about the pay structure.
Pay structure, so can you, option one would be...
The traditional, give it all to them in the first year. Try to get to the, get to the 85-50 level, knowing that we'd have to give that up in all probability next year. Option two would be giving, passing on the 11% savings that we're receiving from the carrier and holding our increase in employer contribution back to year two. So, it's more level.
So, I just want to be sure, because there's some of the dumb questions I think. So, what we're now calling option two, nobody gets a premium increase?
Oh, no, in either option.
Okay, I just want to increase.
In either, neither option yields a premium. See, we're overall with the bundle, getting 11% decrease.
Yeah, everyone would see whatever they're paying out of their checks right now would go down 11%. Is the way that, is the way that we're structured. So, everybody, everybody saves a little now. And in theory, we hope they save a little next year too, but we're cushioning ourselves so that we don't have to go find $600,000 next year. Sorry.
Good news, overall, very good news.
Great.
Would someone like to make a motion about that?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the Anthem, I think, uh...
Mark IV's recommendation?
Mark III's recommendation with option two.
So, we have a motion in the second to approve Mark III's recommendation for Anthem in option two. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anyone abstained? Unanimous? Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Next up, we have school board member comments. Mr. Spideyell?
I'm with you.
Dr. Johnson?
I don't have anything.
Madam Chair, why I have not been asked to be on a hiring committee? You saying, you saying that I am not capable of being on the committee? I have been working in higher education for 22 years. Why I have been on at least 40 hiring committees, even been chair, hiring manager, and interviewee? But it seems I am not qualified for Akimak County Public Schools to be on the hiring committee. Please explain.
Talk with you about this later. And not, not everybody's been on the hiring committee. And it's interesting to me that you never brought this up with a previous chair, but now that I'm the chairperson, you bring this up, it's very interesting to me. Mr. Whipper?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Dr. Law?
The new teacher academy is live on Tuesday at 8:30 at Millwood Middle School. And tomorrow and Thursday, we are having our administrators' two-day professional development retreat on strategic planning. And I need two members to serve on strategic planning task force, which we're putting together. So, because our strategic plan is in 24.
I will talk with people without the issue too.
This one will go on 24.
The board will now adjourn to closed session.
The board will adjourn to closed meeting as allowed by sentence 2.2.
Board will adjourn to closed meeting as allowed by Section 2.2-3711, Code of Virginia Subsection A1, Personal Subsection A2, Student Matters Subsection A7, legal.